We call this meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission, Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Roll call of board members, please.
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Eich.
Present.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Emmanuel Gentey.
Present.
Commissioner Peggy Boulay.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Pinchon.
Present.
We have a call.
And let the record reflect, I think, did Mike leave? Is he still here? Did he leave? I guess he left. Okay, well. All right, very good. All right, uh, first item, any amendments to the agenda? Done?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Let's, uh, have a motion to approve the minutes of March 1st, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
Mr. Ernst, motion approved. We have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Pinchon. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Madam Secretary, thank you. Absolutely. All right. Do we have any communications? Apparently none, and there are no continued public hearings, therefore we'll go to item PC 06-16. Ah, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving the attached waiver plat for the unplatted property of approximately 3.9 acres in size, generally located at 12200 Northeast 14th Avenue, and specifically identified with Miami-Dade County Folio Number 06-2229-000-0171, in accordance with Article 3, Division 8, Section 3-802 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, Chapter 28, Section 28-4.1 of the Miami-Dade County Court of Ordinances, and Chapter 177, Florida Statutes 2015, providing for an effective date and for all of the purposes, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tanya Wilson-Sujor, Director of Community Planning and Development. For your benefit, I'll read the staff recommendation into the record. Staff is requesting that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed resolution with conditions for the waiver plat request submitted by Savitz Enterprises, II, Inc., to subdivide above-described properties into two separate parcels and forward said resolution to the mayor and city council for final consideration. Just as a point of information for the commissioners, this application should look very familiar. You actually reviewed it back in July of 2015. The river plat request at the time by this board was recommended for unanimous approval. Since then, in terms of the contract and arrangement with the property owner, that has changed hands. So what the applicant has requested is that the new property interests come before the board. It's the identical waiver plat request, same lot split, everything, just in terms of the interests of the parties that has changed. So they're here tonight really just for an introduction, but the formality and the review and the technical responses we've already gotten since July. So I just want to introduce the team that's here. Mr. Savitz, if you want to come forward and say a few words, so at least the board can meet the new parties. We felt it was prudent to bring them back to the Planning Commission rather than just forward it on to city council, even though there was a change in terms of the contract and ownership. So, again, you've seen this before, you've already voted on it, but now you have an opportunity to meet them face to face. So, I'm going to give them an opportunity to, um...
Gentlemen, stand up, please. State your name and address for the record.
Christopher Savitz, 1460 Northeast 103rd Street, Miami Shores, Florida. I am the property owner of the property next door to it, and I'm trying to purchase this property to do, put a small development there, whatever the city wants to do, and work with them. I'm not used to talking like this, so bear with me, I'm sorry.
Okay, don't apologize. You know, just put the cards on the table.
Yeah, we want to replot it because they want to separate the piece off because they want to keep their business there, and I own the adjacent property, so we just want to kind of combine them and put some, uh, small bays, just one-story ground bays. That's our idea as of right now. We've been working with our architect.
Subject to change is markets change, we understand.
Right, but that's the right now.
And this other gentleman here?
He works in my office with me, and he's my realtor.
My name is Jay Goldman. I'm the property manager for Mr. Savitz.
Okay, fine, thank you very much. Do you have an address, sir?
10425 Bermuda Drive, Cooper City, Florida.
All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, uh, if there's no further presentation, we'll take the, uh, staff report into consideration. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is encouraged to step forward. Uh, second call for the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak is invited to step forward. I see no ghosts, I see no spirits, I hear no thundering herd, I see no rising cloud of dust, so on the third call for anyone wishing to speak and hearing none, we shall close the public hearing. We'll open this for commission discussion, if there be any. This is the second time this has been before us.
No, sir, the only thing of staff, there's, there's no future change of plans that would concern us, correct? The waiver plat stands even though if they want to reconfigure anything on the property, we're fine with the fact that before we allowed it to be divided up into two parcels, is that correct?
So the part, the request for the parcel split is identical, as I mentioned before, it's really just the interest purchasing party that has changed. So it will go on to city council for one reading because it's a resolution, and then it goes to Miami-Dade County for final plat review.
And the property has been sold or has been bought, so you're the final owner, is that correct?
We are actually under contract, and as soon as the plat is finalized, then we're going to close.
So, I see.
That's correct.
It depends on the plating for, in order for the...
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
As a, as a point of order, and if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I, if you are considering to approve this application, I would ask and urge this body to approve it with the condition that an updated power of attorney is obtained between the property owner, MKR, and Mr. Savitz, who happens to be the buyer of the property. I think we, it would behoove us to obtain a, an updated power.
The Chair accepts that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I believe that the applicant is willing to provide an...
No problem. I already spoke with the seller's attorney, and he'll prepare the POOs for me in the morning.
Thank you so much.
So I can have it right away.
Thank you so much, sir.
That attorney would be, be the attorney of record, or...
For the seller.
It's the attorney for MKR, it's the seller's attorney.
And that's where the power of attorney should stem from, the property owner. Okay, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, Mr. Ernst has moved, and Mr. Gentey has seconded. We have one question.
Yeah, move the, prove with the power of attorney?
Yes, of course, we've accepted that.
Oh, okay.
So, and all other conditions the staff has outlined, we accept. So all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, we're finished. Uh, do we have a commission meeting next month? We do.
June 7?
Oh, yes, anytime, gentlemen. This, we like these, yes, and we hope that goes well. Tanya, I have a question to ask now that we're done with this part of it, and...
Thank you.
Yes, good luck, gentlemen, and that pertains to the Tri-Rail station. Now, Tri-Rail submitted a lengthy report a year or so ago and published it and what have you, indicating their preference for a station was south of 123rd Street. And in the Daily Business Review yesterday, the, their board has approved a loan of $20.3 million in order to cover their costs to link Tri-Rail into the new Brightline train station that's already under construction in downtown Miami, providing effectively a third rail to accommodate the Tri-Rail trains. Now, has there been any movement to design the North Miami Station at all, or are we on the verge of getting a very ugly cigar box because we didn't look ahead?
Not at all. I think our aspirations are a little higher than that as a city.
I would, I would hope we aspire to that, but I...
I will shift over to the CRE side, even though this is not the agency that I work for.
Yes, I understand.
But the CRE, as a part of its budget, had included a portion for station planning and design, and so that has been incorporated. I've spoken to the CRE Executive Director, Rasha Kamow, they're working on a scope to be able to retain an architect, to have a team come in and work on the station area planning. Part of that will be the surrounding mixed-use land use within a one-mile radius, because what RTA did not do was specifically pick a parcel or spot. It really was just an area. They said within a one-mile radius, this is where it potentially could be. That was intentional, just to avoid speculation or anyone...
Sure.
Jacking off a price because you picked my property and that's where the station's going to be. Um, so in terms of the planning process, it will encapsulate everything within that one-mile radius of potentially what the built environment would look like if you have a mix of more than two uses of retail, residential, or hotel, or anything else that could be accommodated in that space. I anticipate, like, within the next six months, there should be a master plan created. Since it is CRE-driven, the CRE will retain the consultant, have the community meetings, the planners on our side will be involved, the public will be invited, but the dollars, the design and the spending is underway.
Will any of that come before us, or is that just, are they the ones that are going to see the pictures in the...
It's going to be brought before the CRE board because it's a CRE-funded project for review and approval, but certainly nothing precludes the consultant for coming here just for informational purposes to present. That's something I can convey back to the CRE staff to let them know.
Would ask that you do that, and so the Planning Commission is aware of their plan, of their direction. We, we understand we'll have no legal input, but we would like a, a full-blown presentation on the picture.
What was, I'm sorry, what was the radio, what was the area, the one-mile radius you said?
Uh, it was the area at the train station on 123rd Street. If you could hypothetically put a point there...
And a one-mile circle, okay, I got you, thank you, okay.
It's really one-mile circle around that area when you look at the RTA master plan. Um, in terms of the mixed use, on the planning side, the comprehensive plan does recognize that spot as the area that the RTA has chosen in their study, does recommend that land use changes would occur in that area. So what you will see is the map amendment. Once we finalize the master plan, we have more definitive direction in terms of what the area will look like, and we'll follow through with the land development regulations and the actual standards for who can go there and what permitted uses you encourage and the height and the scale. That you will touch, because that's a map amendment.
It's, it's interesting in that Tri-Rail is quite convinced that they'll be running their trains by the fourth quarter of 2017, so if they believe they'll have the money, they'll have the hardware, when are we getting our station in 2025? You know, given that it's six months to just go through this, it's design business.
Now, some of the articles I've read, I, I never saw North Miami mentioned, but I did see Adventure and North Miami Beach mentioned as hard rock solid spots that they were definitely going to be putting stations. My understanding from that, or my take on that, is that it was their decision as to where they want to put the station.
Correct.
Not any particular city, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
They wouldn't just necessarily say, well, we don't want to, they could in fact say, we don't want to put a station at Nor, at North Miami, we'd rather put it in North Miami Beach, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's definitive, because the master plan was already adopted by the RTA. The stations are listed in there. We could send you a copy of the link, I'm sure Jason's familiar with it.
Only because I know that the Herald is not always accurate.
So we're listed there, to answer your question.
Again, I did see some articles where I never saw North Miami listed, but I did see North Miami Beach, so I want to, you know, I want to make sure that we are in fact still in the game.
We are, we definitely are. It's in print.
Yeah.
In print, if not in reality, no.
Yeah, I mean, you know, maybe...
Was it your presentation before the city council?
Yeah, no, RTA has been before the city council, I think as early as probably last month, they came back again, um...
And I saw nothing in, in the local media as far as, you know, if our city's not getting the word out there to, that, that this is taking place, I don't, I didn't know about it, and so, you know, if we start doing the math here, we might start discovering that a lot of people aren't aware that this is taking place, and that Tri-Rail is in fact coming through. I think we need to get the word out.
Yeah, and since it is a CRE-funded and driven process, we can convey that.
Some support built up and some momentum going within our community to, to make this thrive.
There's been some discussion that I'm aware of about having a, a stop by 151st that would be of direct service to FIU, and then the stop here at 123rd, but that's not...
It was considered as a part of the data and analysis phase, but it was never selected. So they had hypothetical stops, that was one of them that we had seen that was considered, but it was never picked as one of the final locations. It's too close to 123rd Street, was the response from the RTA.
Of course, the shuttle bus could always run from the train station to the university.
So you'll probably have park-and-ride stations between FIU, Johnson Wills, and have commuter connections between those hubs and the actual station stop, but it's too close to have two train station stops.
Within the CRA plan, are they envisioning a parking garage so that you can get to the train station and make use of it?
Correct. That would be incorporated as a part of the planning.
That would be nice if it happens.
We were talking about a parking garage downtown yesterday at the advisory, CRA advisory, and, um, now let's see where they're going to put the station first of all, because that goes into conjunction with what we talked about earlier in the Planning Commission about the compact urban center. If we're going to have that station, it might be the time to use the Urban Land Institute's philosophy of work, play, and living in the same place, you know?
Certainly, the city would be way ahead.
We think a little broad-minded in long-term instead of, of short-term.
You know, Kenny, my feeling is just the city would be way ahead if they actually planned...
Yep.
Restaurant and entertainment options within this concept so that people would have a reason to get off the train in North Miami.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and that's why I talked about a compact urban center where you live, work, employ, and...
Yeah, this is, this is certainly to be hoped for, if the CRA has such vision. All right, well, enough said on that, we, we can't, we're not building the station.
Tanya, I wanted to ask you a question. I, I see some movement or possible speculation that the Jockey Club's going to add another 300 units, and they're getting North Miami services, water and sewer. Now, does that impact those 300 units, does that impact our services?
It impacts your water and sewer, your level of service in terms of demand, because they're in your service area.
Okay, they're in our service area, so when we talk about the 5,000 units that we're on, that's supposedly the capacity, does that 300 units that they're going to build come against our 500 units?
When it's submitted to the county, that would have to be reviewed, because I know it's an unincorporated Miami-Dade county. They have to justify...
Yeah, but I'm, I'm kind of lost on this now.
So I'm going there. If you permit me, I'll go there. So a part of your assessment in having a land use change in that area, if they're looking to go denser and higher, they have to justify to the county that they have sufficient water and sewer to support a future development. Part of that justification will be looking at North Miami's capacity. Does North Miami have sufficient capacity to accommodate what they have coming online? If they don't, then the application would not be approved, and if they do, then it would be...
Okay, but my, my question was, during the whole planning process, we were locked into that, we only had enough capacity, correct me if I'm wrong, for 5,000 units.
Uh-huh.
Now, I see FIU building dormitories out there, and my question is, and if the Jockey Club is going to build 300 units, does that come against, does that knock it down the 4,700 units for North Miami? That's all you have left, is you can only get 4,700 units if they're going to get it down at the Jockey Club, and there's FIU's dormitory, does that impact our system?
So, here's one of the issues that was raised in the objections, recommendations, and comments that were issued by DEO. One of the challenges that the city faced, and we said it a few times, was that the city had to prove that you had sufficient capacity to accommodate its future development.
Okay.
And the argument that the city was able to proffer to the state was, we do have sufficient capacity within that 5,000, and as long as the city doesn't exceed it, our comprehensive plan approval would be stayed and, and be okay at this point. Anything beyond that, that exceeds it, we would have to upgrade our infrastructure. So the state did make a point of that. In the case of other surrounding areas, you're mentioning the Jockey Club, these are things that are external to North Miami, but they too would have to prove that they have sufficient water and sewer infrastructure. If there is nothing beyond the 5,000 to accommodate it, then these developments cannot occur because they're in our water service area. If there's a need to go bigger or denser, then they would have to pay for the infrastructure upgrades to support that.
Well, then...
That's pretty much the, the private sector would need to take that burden on, because the city's 5,000 is not locked in by the state.
Okay, well, I don't want to, I don't want to beat this. The other, the other thing I want to bring up is the parking garages. We're going to go back to that and, and get an ordinance passed on that, and the third thing is, it's time now, seven years have passed since our old land use ordinance where any, any property that was rental property was supposed to be paid. I don't see any enforcement on that yet, and seven years since, when are we going to start enforcing that? Does anybody know about it? Does code enforcement know about it? Does the city know about it, or is that just going to be an ordinance that's on the books that we're not going to enforce?
I will raise the issue with code enforcement to begin, the compliance portion of this, which is, that's the second phase.
Yeah, I mean, there's apartment buildings out there that are all over the city. I walk through the city every day, that, that, it's just people parking on the grass, rental property, so that's what I'm talking about. That's what, I had that specifically put in the ordinance seven years ago. Any place that's a rental property has got to be paved.
So, so I will contact code enforcement to begin, you know, a notice, an awareness. Knocking on doors, the same, by the way.
I mean, we're going to send notices out to the apartment owners, or...
Well, yeah, to give them the opportunity to alert them to the fact that the, the code is now awakened and it's now triggered, so therefore they have an obligation to pave their respective properties.
Okay.
Give them a reasonable period of time to do so, because it's been sort of like dormant for seven years or so, now it's...
They have seven years to get it done.
Now it's time, the time's up. So, reasonable notice is always good. Some will comply, some will not. Those that will not comply, then there's the violation portion of the code enforcement, and, you know, we'll take those steps as necessary to enforce the code.
All right, and the parking garage ordinance, we're going to update that?
So now that, now that the comprehensive plan has been adopted, the state gives you one year in which to update your LDRs. So the parking, now that your comp plan has been adopted, the state gives you 12 months in which to update your land development regulations. All of the parking standards, all of your structures, all of your maximum heights are governed by your LDRs, so...
I'm talking about landscaping, lighting, so forth.
Correct, so all of that will come before you in the next couple of months, now that the comp plan is done.
Okay, all right, great, great.
There's a whole domino effect of this document's done, now you're on to the next one, so you'll get that shortly.
In the past, when we over, when we ever looked at a development that included parking, we always, there were X amount of spaces for X amount of people service.
Mm-hmm.
The parking lot on 123rd, and this game Boulevard, that, where, where now you have three big box stores essentially in there, Ross, and then you have Office Max, whatever else, you can't get into that parking lot anymore. You just cannot get in there. How do we, how do we, how do we avoid things like that in the future if, if our city's allowing these, not looking at the, at the prospect of, of, granted, getting new business in the community is great, at the same time, we're creating this bottleneck and to a point where it's not even, that people won't go there because of the fact that they can't find a place to park. So I, there's some, there's some situations here where I think we need to look forward in our, our thinking as to what we issue for parking.
Early development.
It's a land use law issue, some...
Shopping centers.
Well, the, the issue is that, that the code has been modified and has changed with the times.
Right.
However, the property owner who was there prior to the existence of the code has not only a vested right, their grandfather then, by law, their grandfather then, so they're protected until such time as the property is destroyed by, by a greater percentage of 50% plus one, or abandonment. So those are the two elements that will trigger the, the, the existing ordinance to be now applicable, and until such time that those two events occur...
So if a big, if a, let's say, one of the elements of that big box group in there pulls out, would that trigger that?
A change of ownership in and of itself is not sufficient, because that does not constitute a change of use.
So it needs to be a change of ownership of the land itself?
It, it, it required voluntary, it requires one, voluntary abandonment or change of use, and, and, or an act of, got a force majeure event sufficient enough to destroy the property, and now it has to be reconstructed by more than 50%. That will trigger, this is the, the only event under the law that will trigger the new scheme of the ordinance to be applicable to an existing use. People have property rights.
It's just, it becomes unfathomable where we allow four big, couple, four big box office things to move into a complex where there's no parking.
Somehow, they, and it works against them, by the way, because if people can't park, they're not going to shop.
Right.
So, and it's happened to me where, okay, I'm gone, but it's the law, so it's until they do something proactively to change that, or by one of those three elements that I've just mentioned, the new code, okay, cannot apply.
See, the only real win to that location is to have the stores moved to the front and build a parking garage in the back, and that would necessitate the wholesale destruction of the operation.
Or to seek with the property owner some kind of, you know, an arrangement, you know, where they can accommodate more parking voluntarily, but, but we can't go there and compel the property owner who was legal at the time that they opened up their business. They were operating under a, under our code, and by virtue of us modifying the code, you can't say...
Which at that time, we mandated all that setback and put all the parking in the front, and...
Yes, sir. That's...
You were limited now, the demand has risen, and...
I mean, it's great that we're getting all this business coming in, sitting with customers, but it, it's become a wash now, because you can't get in there to...
As time goes on, the purpose of legally non-conforming property, properties and uses is to, as time goes on, the elimination, that's the goal of a non-conforming, legally non-conforming structure or use, is to eliminate completely, but, but you have to be patient, because people do have property rights, and if they maintain that use, as long as they're maintaining that use...
Well, it's interesting, that same owner has, has a pending development right behind that property, that would, looks like it's designed or, or might, there might be a plan of where there's frontal property, and the same sort of scenario would be set in place.
That new development would fall under the scope of the new code, and would have to comply with the new code sections. Otherwise, they would have to seek an enlargement of the non-conforming use, and that would be something we would have to look at.
And then, one other quick question. I know, I, I want to cut this real, because I'm a big Heat fan. Is there, at the next meeting or something, can you give us a little progress report or an update on, um, the folks that came to us about the dockage, and how, if some of that was remediated, some of the problems that they had with getting their boats, or if the county has stepped in, if there's any, anything new insight into us allowing that to happen, and, and did it work, and, and, you know, did we not have any problems with that, or...
It, it's a work in progress right now, so it would be premature to give you an actual presentation. There are two workshops that were requested. The first has occurred, and the second workshop is pending a date. The city manager hasn't identified a date.
I mean, we, we approved that, that dock, and...
The city council...
You did, and the, the city council...
The city council threw it back.
Correct.
They said, they listened to the pitches, the torches and pitchforks, and they said that we don't believe there's been enough discussion about this. So they threw it back and said, we want to have two workshops done, invite people in. And I would suggest that for the second workshop, because what took place at the first, there was decent attendance by all, you know, waterfront people, but there was a lot of things we wanted to talk about. I mean, the, the, the idea behind throwing it back was, if we're going to discuss waterway regulations, let's take a broader view than just these guys trying to dock their boats behind their house. And so it was a, supposed to be a broader discussion, and in order to facilitate that, there needed to be an announcement of what the, because I guess you guys actually spent some time asking code enforcement and others about the elements that they'd like to discuss, but nobody knew about those before the meeting started. So when they showed up at the meeting, they could either, they had 10 seconds to think about these discussion points, so that he would, they would either speak with 10 seconds worth of thought or say nothing, and most people chose to say nothing. So the whole meeting gravitated down to the one subject about docking those boats. So for the second workshop, I'd recommend that whatever the subjects you'd like to kick around, let's put it out in front of people so that they can think about it and talk about it before they show up at the workshop. And that, I think we would get a better, a better workshop on it.
So we can convey that back to the city manager, since all of the thoughts and ideas are now being spooled together in one soup, and we intend to come back out to the second workshop with everything that's been gathered over the course of time, so I'll convey that...
But present it to people before the workshop.
Yes, I'll convey that recommendation to the city manager. He's spearheading right now the effort and going back out to engage the public, so I'll be happy to bring that message back.
Does anybody have any thoughts about the next date?
So does that mean it returns to the planning commission, or it goes forward to city council?
He has not come up with an actual date. It's already at city council, um, they had the first presentation that was heard, and then it was tabled. So it won't be coming back, it will proceed on with whatever amendments and changes occur to the ordinance. Correct, but I convey that back, Commissioner Patron, to the city manager, and once a date has been set, we'll send out through the secretary an announcement to the planning commission, so you can attend.
That would be nice, yes. All right, if there's, if there's nothing further, then we are adjourned. Now, before all of you guys run away, we'll all sit down for a minute, now that, now that we're off the record.